So with that Superintendent.
Okay, before we get started, I just, I had to call out Jackson, our sixth grader. I wish he was still here because I wanted to come over and shake his hand. But what a, what a well spoken articulate young man. And to be able to come up here in front of folks he doesn't know, in front of a board, to speak from his heart, that, that is a, he is a product of Stonemont Public Schools and we should all be very proud of that. And I'm glad that our meeting started that way because it really keeps us grounded in why we are all here. And I, and I also want to acknowledge and thank the folks that are here tonight as well. This is a budget that I am certainly not proud of. And I don't think anybody really, nobody feels good about this budget. There's nothing in here that I can recommend. You know, I, I've been working in a central administrative role now for 11 years and I've never seen a budget like this. It's, it's devastating and I'm going to go through it in some great detail tonight. The way that the presentation is set up is I have a lot of slides in here. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on every single one of them, but some of them I'm going to dive deep into because I want to provide context for what's going on, why we're at this point. I want to remind folks of where we've been, where, where we are now and where we're going. And I also want to acknowledge the, the hard work of the administrative leadership team that has really put their, their heart into this. And we've had, had to have some very difficult discussions and none of this is easy for anybody. So at the end of the, of the presentation, at the slide deck, there are four appendices. This entire presentation will be online tomorrow morning. And also the recording of tonight's presentation will be available through Stonemont TV. Because we have actually on here, it's called out the enrollment projection, it's actually part of the appendices. So I'm just going to go over that really quickly. Pull up the slide here. What you're looking at here is essentially our historical enrollment data. And so back here or on this column, it's showing birth year. So it's birth 2009, all the way to 2019, the number of births that have been certified according to public health records, students who have been born in Stonham. And then, and/or have moved into Stonham with the birth year indicated next to it. And then the, the associated school year. So we are right here right now. We're at the 24, 25 school year. And as you can see, you know, everything here is, it's going up. And especially where you look at our, our lower grades, first grade and second grade in particular, you know, we're at 200 students right now in grade one, 190 in grade two, 185 in grade three, 185 in grade four. You go back 10 years, these numbers are a lot higher. When you go down to the other side of the spectrum, and it's interesting to look at this, when you get into, I'll do high school here first, nine through 12, our numbers have been relatively steady when it gets to the much upper grade levels. But when you see grade 10 in this upcoming group, this is an indication of students that are going out for a variety of different reasons, whether it's to attend a career and technical vocational school, charter school, or private schools. We are watching those numbers very carefully, but the reason I bring that up is because there's an uneven distribution of, of student growth. In other words, we're seeing a lot more growth come in in the earlier grades and then it tends to tail off toward the end of their education. One of the things that we're going to be looking at is with the building coming online, will there be students either staying within districts or, or will they be coming back from, from, from schools that they've chosen to, to move on to outside of Stonemont? So we'll be taking a closer look at that. With our projections, when we look here at our school year up, up here now is where our current school year and the line just below that is 25, 26. This is all fresh data. This includes, in this report, one of the 500 units, one of, there were 500, I don't know how to phrase that correctly. HUD provides data on the number of permits that are pulled for building. So this includes that the provision of 500 new units coming online. It does not account for the full 1,000 or so that are anticipated. So that's something to keep in mind. This particular report is an actual enrollment projection. It's different from the demographic forecast that we had last year. So I'm relying on this right now because this is what we know. These are students that are in front of us, so it's very accurate. And it's accurate also because it's pulled some of that data from the multi-housing units that are coming online. In the end here, this is the, the important number is that we're looking at another significant increase of about 30 additional students for next school year. We had 38 as of October 1st and that number is now over 40 for FY '25. So in two years, that's an increase of about 70 students, 70 to 75 students. And we're anticipating that trend to continue. So that's important because it impacts our ability to sustain the growth that's happening. And in order to, you know, if you took the, the general math and you took the per pupil cost of about 20,000, to make it easy, you know, 40 new students, to educate 40 new students at $20,000 apiece, that's $400,000 right there. So we're, we're looking at significant cost increases, but what's been happening is we haven't been able to invest. And over the years, we keep cutting because we still have students coming and we have to have a balanced budget. And so that results in, in major cuts. So this is one area that we're really struggling. I'm going to start from the beginning of the slides now unless you had questions about So I'm going to go over the five-year forecast to start, talk about our major cost center drivers, our trends, the breakdown between our spending between general education and special education, our historical budget expenses and revenue, what our need is for FY '26, and proposals for how to balance the budget through reductions. This is our community, this is who we are. This is always an opportunity to review our mission and core values, especially the core values that we're creating, a safe, inclusive educational environment, fostering and holding high expectations for student learning, and sharing responsibility for the success of our students. That sharing of responsibility is, is not just within the school buildings themselves, that is a community responsibility. We currently have six different programs running. So traditionally you saw that we had five schools, but we have the pre-K, so that's a new, new standalone school. Our average in district cost per student right now is $20,910. We have 480 employees, 212 of those are full-time teachers. We have 2,494 entire enrollment for students and that includes preschool and out-of-district placements. And our total state aid funding currently is $7,515,053. You saw this slide last year and we are facing the same kind of objectives in building a robust talent system. You heard Mr. Ebskryer earlier come up and talk about the staff that we have that we're trying to retain and we're also trying to attract talent. And that has become a hardship for the district. And in fact, we have had staff leaving into the school year, after the school year started because of all our opportunities and hard decisions that they had to make regarding their own pocketbooks. We are also really focused on strengthening our entire continuum of services from pre-K all the way up through our 22 program and focusing on the core, which is our core instruction. And we are also really working hard to meet the social, emotional, behavioral needs of all of our students and create a vision for engaging their families. And all of this comes together by implementing data-informed systems that ensure equitable use of resources and accountability for outcomes. That word equitable use of resources, I just want to call that out because none of our, not one building, not all of our buildings are one in the same. They're all different, they all have different needs, they all run different programs. Our student demographics, they are changing. Again, I'm not going to go through these individually, but we are becoming a more diverse, beautiful community and we are growing. We have 13.2% of our students whose first language is not English, about 4.6% of our students qualify for services. 22.4% of our students are classified as low income by federal or state government. And our number of students with disabilities is 22.3%. When you look at all of this, this is a staggering number that put together, we have almost four out of 10 students are considered high needs and that's a classification that is established by the Department of Education. So high needs means that they fit into one of these categories above and sometimes there's overlap. So creating some context, looking at what we had as an appropriated budget for FY '25, this is our, our working number that we started the year with. And then in October, a town meeting, there was an additional $300,000 approved specifically to help us to offset the extraordinary costs that we saw in the increases in transportation this year. So our final budget for FY '25 ended up being $35,796,978. So what we're looking at here are, I just want to explain this, this chart. When doing a forecast, we have to make certain assumptions. So one of the assumptions is inflation. How much do we think the cost of things is going to go up based on our trends, our historical trends? This has been really hard to make those assumptions over the last couple of years, but generally we try to follow what state and federal governments are looking at by their indices of inflation. So we are assuming a 3% inflation over the next five years with conservatively 4% need for cost and growth over time. And just by doing the simple math and mapping this out, it's pretty much spot on in identifying that we have a deficit showing here at about $4.4 million for FY '26. But I am also deeply worried about the following fiscal years that we also see a tremendous amount of money that we're going to have as a deficit. If you look at how we projected this out for '27, '28, and '29, and '30, all of those years run between 1.6 and 1.8 million deficit each year. In addition, on top of the 4.4 deficit that we're facing for FY '26. So we're not just talking about a one-year problem here, we're talking about several years. This is based on a 5% assumption. So you know, again, we used 4%, which is very conservative, 5% that debt goes up higher, that deficit goes up higher to somewhere in the range of 4.7 for FY '26. And then it's in the 2 million range for each of the consecutive years up through fiscal year '30. And we, we did this all the way up to seven, but you get the point is that those assumptions go up and we have been, this is not like any other trend that I've seen in terms of how much the cost has gone up to educate our students. So it's not unfathomable to see these costs going up and it, it is happening now. We're seeing our costs go up. So, so we did project these out and the 6% obviously shows us at a 5 million deficit for FY '26, followed by 2.4 all the way up to 2.9 through FY '30. The, these are things that I literally Googled today. These, these are headlines that I wanted to show that this is not just a Stonemont problem. This is happening in what we might describe as quote unquote more affluent communities. It's happening in big cities, it's happening in little towns. These are literally hot, just news clippings from all the towns that are dealing with this just within the last two weeks. These have all come out, this is from December 6th, December 5th, November 30th. So this is happening a lot. I'm going to get into detail now about our specific cost drivers that are going up for FY '26. To begin with, last year we were originally facing a $2 million deficit. As time went along, the town and the select board were able to allocate an additional $500,000 of remaining ARPA funds. And then we also qualified, we applied for and were awarded $250,000 in state subsidies. So we use that to offset a total of $750,000 of expenses, bringing our actual cut from 2 million to 1.3. But moving forward, we have to account for that $750,000. It has to, we have to account for it as part of our budget. We're not getting, we can't, there's no more ARPA and there's no guarantee that we're going to get additional state aid, although we will certainly try. Unbudgeted fiscal year '25 additions, these were, most, most of them came through as a result of IEPs that had been signed and executed late in the school year. And as a result, that meant needing to hire additional ESPs. A lot of folks might know them more as by the name of paraprofessionals. Our ABA techs, which are our Applied Behavioral Analysts. We added in a board-certified behavioral analyst. We added in special educators. So that was an additional 470 that was not budgeted. That has to be accounted for. Then we also had NRT Transportation. That contract was newly settled in July. We are part of a public collaborative called the SEEM Collaborative. There are 13 other districts. We thought we would have a lot of bargaining power in being able to renew a contract or to go out to bid for a contract. Our vendors, NRT Transportation, they were awarded the contract. That came in $450,000 more than we were expecting. And that is just in FY '25. Next year it's going up by another 435,000. That's what I'm talking about when I talk about the expenses going up. Transportation is one of them, it's a huge expense. FY '26 additional costs that we're looking at for next year, I just mentioned the NRT contract going up again. The consecutive years after that, I believe it's a five-year contract, they're not as high, they're more moderate increases, but we have accounted for those in our five-year projection that I shared with you earlier. The increase in out-of-district tuitions, that's a percentage that's set by the Office of, I always forget the name of it, OSD. And this year it was set for, sorry, for FY '26 at 3.67. FY '25, that was 4.6, 4.69. And last year it was 14%. So three years, our out-of-district tuitions have gone up by over 20%. For next year, that 3.67 equals $1,205,471. Our steps in lanes, which is where teachers are, basically they, they land on a schedule of payment depending on their experience and their educational attainment. And so you can move down and over. When those move down and over, those alone are going to cost 535,976. That does not include a COLA adjustment. And COLA is Cost of Living Adjustment. It's noteworthy here that we are starting bargaining with six of our teacher bargaining units. And you know, we need to do a good job making sure that we are attracting and retaining talent. And that is something that we need to be very mindful of as we move forward throughout our process here. Our SEEM Collaborative, those tuitions increased by 9%. This number looks small compared to the others because we don't, first of all, the SEEM Collaborative, again, they're provided by public schools and so it's a much more efficient way of managing programs. And so it keeps costs down. And so our costs for SEEM Collaborative placements are lower and a percentage of that, even though it's a 9% increase, it ends up being under 100,000. So our anticipated deficit, not including those COLA or contract settlements, not including the potential of needing to redistrict and/or add buses, we're looking at 3,628,397. And so we estimate that our, our, you know, trying to build in COLA and redistricting and new contract settlements, our target is somewhere in the four to four and a half million dollar deficit. Before I move on, do you have any questions? Okay. I'm going to talk about our operating costs and trends. So this helps to put things in perspective in terms of what we're spending per pupil. You're seeing over here a description by category, so it's all broken out. And so essentially the total cost to, to educate a student, on average, when you average everything out, in Stonemont is $20,910 compared to state. The average per pupil, when you take all the districts in Massachusetts and average those out, they're at 21,377. So we're not that far behind the state average. And as I go along, you'll see a little bit more detail into how those services are provided by category. Whoops. This is a breakout of how our money is spent. Obviously, the instructional services is the high, you know, it's, it's 84, 85% of our entire operating budget. So really, when we're needing, when we're looking at deficits, we're talking about salaries. We're not, we don't have a lot to play with in terms of other. So, so really we're looking at salaries. Compared to our comparable districts, this is the list of 11 or 12 districts here and where Stonemont falls, we're about right in the middle when you compare us from Wilmington across the board for the last several fiscal years. Wilmington currently spends just over $24,000 per student. Melrose just spends just over 16,000. And again, we're at that 20, almost 21,000. Again, this just lays out a little bit more in detail about how we're spending our money by category. So this, for folks that really want to dig into the line items, this will be online and you can look to see exactly what we're spending by line item on our budget. This goes into what we spend on teaching services, professional development, instructional materials, guidance, counseling, and testing, pupil services, operations and maintenance, insurance, retirement programs. This actually comes out of the town budget here, but when we report to the state, the town does what's called a chargeback. And so it allows the, the Department of Education to have a methodology that's the same when it comes to comparisons of spending per pupil across the state. So again, you see the final number here. It's when we talk about what we spend on students, the, even though our, our budget is in the 35 million range, the actual cost, when you add everything up, it's 46,343,858. That includes all of those other expenses that I just talked about. That includes things like the insurance and benefits. This shows what we're spending as a breakdown per pupil by each school building. So folks that are interested in looking at that, again, when I mentioned not all things are the same, you have to take into account that where we have a building with more experienced teachers, for example, the average salary there is higher. So at the high school, we have a lot of veteran teachers. So the average salary is averaged is higher. At, at other buildings where we have fewer veteran teachers, those average salaries tend to be lower. So when you look at these numbers, those are some of the nuances that you have to take into account. Because when you first look at this, if you're not thinking about that, you might think, well, we're, we're spending unequally between the buildings. That's one conclusion that you could make. But when you dive into how, you know, what your staff composition is and what programs you're running, all those things play into these, these numbers. I'm going to talk a little bit now about our breakdown of special education and general education spending. And this is a trend from 2015. It's hard to believe when I look at these numbers, 16 million back in 2015 and 16 when, when we look at Gen Ed and all the way up to our current fiscal year, where we're spending about 20,283,000 on the Gen Ed side. What you're going to see here is a result of our reductions. So you see this gap, this is flat. So if you look at 2019, 2019 was six fiscal years ago, we're spending $20 million on general education. COVID hit, we were at 19.6 and we had those big cuts that we had to do. 20, 21, 22, 20,700,000. 22, 23, it went down, sorry, it went up slightly, 21,292. Went down last year, 20,320 and we're at 20,283. So we're only, we're operating in six fiscal years with all the growth that we've had on an additional 200 some odd thousand dollars on the Gen Ed side of expenses. So I wanted to call that out because I wanted to show that we're not, we're not running extravagant programs. We are not overspending, we are not mismanaging money. We are operating here on a shoestring budget and it is no longer sustainable. When we look at our special education operating costs, these big jumps here that you see, the jumps are much bigger because the costs in special education have gone up. I just talked about that 21, 22% increase that we've seen over three years. And I just talked about the transportation costs that go with that. That is, and I wanted to speak to, I believe it might have been Ms. Calalea, who earlier had mentioned that, you know, the, that there was no intent for the tone of that notification to, to make this an issue about special education. This is not an issue about special education, this is an issue about general education and how we need to do better in general ed so that we can have fewer students going into special education. But the point I was trying to make was that on the general ed side, we've been staying relatively flat. And on the special ed side, the costs and the expenses are, are going up. And when you look at 21, 2020 and 21, we were spending 10,400,000. Now that budget's at, the expense is at 15,513. So that's a huge jump. You know, Gen Ed, I told you, was an increase of about 200,000. On the special ed side is about 5 million. So that's a problem. And that's, again, it's not a Stonemont unique issue, this is happening across the state. Every superintendent that I talk to, they're dealing with the extraordinary increase in costs that are related to our tuitions and our transportation. And it's not a knock on special education, it is just a fact that the expense to provide education to students that, that have special needs, it's, it's just more expensive than it used to be. As a total percentage of our As a total percentage of our operating costs, you saw consistently, if you look back to 2015, it was about the mid-thirties range. And now we're up at about forty-three percent of our total operating costs are, are going into special education. And again, it's, it's a result of all of those cost inflation, the cost of labor, the cost of transportation, it has gone up. This is just breaking out what we spend by what are known as private outside special ed placements. That number is just about three point eight million. And our collaborative placements is just under a million. We would like to see that chart on the bottom here. We would like to see, like to have more students attending collaboratives where we are able to, where the collaborators are able to provide those services. What we're finding is that oftentimes our collaboratives, they have waiting lists. And they have staffing issues, just like the rest of us. And so we're not able to always have that as an option. And so we end up needing to look at alternative options, which the only alternatives are the, the private placements. When you look at what we spend by per pupil on out-of-district expenses is just a comparison with the same list I showed you before. There is a huge range here from Medford spending on average five hundred and twenty-one dollars per student all the way up to Wilmington at seventeen hundred. We're about here, about twelve hundred per student, when you look at it that way, if you took all of our students. Increasing service needs, the numbers have gone up. You know, five hundred and sixteen back in twenty. And now we're at six hundred and thirty-one students that are receiving specialized education. I also put in here that we've only, not only, but we have increased eleven full-time equivalencies, while the number of IEPs has increased by eleven, by a hundred and fifteen over that same time period. So that's roughly a one to ten ratio. So these are our total costs. When you add everything up, this does not include the transportation cost. So these are our, our major cost centers. And you're going to see these split up by district, Colonial Park, Robin Hood, every building here. And what we are forecasting for our proposed budget. You're going to look at and see some significant differences here. And Leah, do you want to talk about what we did to, with the cost centers with special education and district?
So if you don't, you'll see that the adopted budgets for FY twenty-four and twenty-five are pretty consistent. As you can see, we added the pre-K to FY twenty-five. But you'd see that the department district-wide really covered everything that wasn't a school. And it wasn't being broken out. So what we're proposing in FY twenty-six is to really break out district-wide and make it something that's, that's purely district-wide. And what we're looking at is a district-wide cost center, one for each school, including pre-K, elementary, which would be the costs for curriculum and any stipends that are elementary, something that would be across the elementaries themselves. And then also too, we would add a special ed cost center so that we can break out all these, you know, numbers so that we can be transparent and show what we're really looking at. And then in turn, when we do the year-end report for the Department of Ed, this is how I break things out. And this is how they like it reported to them. So it actually creates two, it helps in two ways. It helps us to be as transparent as possible on all of our expenses, but also to realign to what Desi would like to see us to be reporting out as well. Revenue from grants, you'll see that we have three years' worth of revenue from grants. You'll notice we get the usual entitlement, excuse me, the early special, the early childhood special education grant, which is called two sixty-two. It is declining. That one actually is pretty all over the road for the last three years. But the IDEA or two forty grant has, has gone down somewhat. That is where we take a lot of our special ed tuitions from our offset of the budget. Our Title One, Title Two, and Title Four is declining as well. And in the totals, you can see we went down, we, we have a pretty low number, about a million eighty-six. Then we went and jumped up a little bit, just due to the fact that we got a little more in two forty. And then we've declined as much as half in Title One as of FY twenty-five.
And I, sorry, I just wanted to jump in there because somebody had asked about the grants. So these are what we call entitlement grants. So these are grants that, based on a formula and based on current need, with regard to title grants, those are usually tied into specifically poverty level or low income level. And there's a formula that the state decides how much you're entitled to. So back in these fiscal years, there were more students that were reported as, in that low-income range. And I mean, it's good that we're reporting fewer students as low income, but it impacts the amount of aid that we get through federal grants. So that's almost, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand less than what we were seeing from, from two fiscal years ago for Title One. All of these grants have, well, not all, but Title Two has gone down. Title Four has actually remained steady or been at least a little bit more preferable for us. But as far as other grants go, the Department of Education does send out opportunities for grants and they're usually for very specific things. So for example, Assistant Superintendent Castanway is working on a grant currently for early childhood, early childhood and literacy right now. And those are specific earmarked funds that the governor has set aside, which we always try to apply for. So this is a big grant. If we're able to get it, we could get several hundred thousand dollars over several years. But there's no guarantee to get those grants and they're what's called competitive grants. So unlike title grants where the government says you're entitled to this amount of money, competitive grants are, you have to go for the money and you have to show why, what you're going to do with it in, in relation to what the grant is expecting you to do. And you have to spend it specifically on those things. So for early literacy is an example, Ms. Castanway is working on that. And if we're able to get that grant, we could potentially hire early literacy teachers. But we can't really count on that as part of our budget because we don't know if we're actually going to get it or not. The other part of these grants is that sometimes we apply for them in the fall and we don't hear back until January or February. By that time, you have to hire your, your staff. And then they tell you, you have to spend the money by June thirtieth. And that happened to us last year on a teacher diversification grant that we got. We applied for it, we got it. You were part of that group and we did professional development. And then we, we didn't actually have the funding until February. And by that time, we, we really couldn't do anything with it. And the whole purpose was to, was to incentivize teacher diverse, teachers from diverse backgrounds to come to Stonem by giving them some, some bonuses or some benefit for helping to pay with educational expenses. So there are grants available, but they, they tend to be for very specific sources. And there are very few grants that allow you to just take the money and use it as you need it. So it's usually a very specific set of standards that you have to follow. So for other revenue sources from preschool, this is a little bit, the reason this looks off are a couple of things. One is that when we collect revenue for preschool, it's not on a monthly payment. It is by fiscal year. So it's actually split up between, our fiscal year runs July one to June thirtieth. So when folks are signing up for preschool, they're paying half of it in one year and half in the other year. So that's why these numbers look a little bit skewed. But if our tuition increases, we're looking at additional revenue by about a hundred, a hundred and two thousand dollars. Athletics revenue, this is what we're looking at in terms of what we bring in for user fees and for gate receipts. Gate receipts are when we, when, when we sell tickets. And all of these go into a revolving account that we then basically use to help with our expenses to run our athletics programs.
And it's good to note that it is, the gate receipts are declining because we haven't had much gate. And you know, hopefully in the next few years, we'll be able to bring that number up with the new fields coming onboard and the new, you know, just more participation.
Yeah, gate receipts are down. We don't have home, we really haven't had any home games this year at all. So Circuit Breaker, Leah, you want to?
Sure. So Circuit Breaker. So we had an anomaly in FY twenty-four with Circuit Breaker. And that was the year that we did get that huge rate hike from OSD that equate to, what was it, approximately fourteen percent increase in one year?
Fourteen on the nose, yeah.
Fourteen on the nose. So what the governor did was they invited all the districts to apply and put in for extraordinary relief, depending on the amount of money we were spending in our district on out-of-district placements. So what we did was we applied because we were eligible within our numbers. We got two different extraordinary relief amounts of money. The first one was called, or what they designated as extra Circuit Breaker for FY twenty-five. And then Circuit Breaker Reserve for FY twenty-four only. And this is what we talked about, I believe it was last year, where the two hundred and two thousand, fifty-five dollars was to be used in FY twenty-four only to help with the bump in the rate increase. The eighty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars was basically a payment a year early. So what they did was is they gave us that amount of money and took it off our FY twenty-five reimbursement in case we needed it to help ourselves with FY twenty-four. So in my opinion, when we received it, since it was FY twenty-five, we designated it as FY twenty-five only so that we wouldn't be behind. Circuit Breaker, we received one point six million dollars in revenue as just the regular Circuit Breaker reimbursement. And then Medicaid reimbursement is that fund that, what we do as the Special Education Department does is they do bill back the state for their services in certain designations. So for billable services for anyone on Medicaid, we bill back the state. And then we in turn get reimbursement from the state. And so this does waiver from each year, depending on how much we bill. And last year, we talked to the town administrator and we opened up a special education stabilization fund. And so at every October town meeting now, what they do is they look at the last year's reimbursement from Medicaid. And then they give that to us for any unbudgeted items in special ed every year. So in FY twenty-four, they brought in one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which was allocated to us this October for any unbudgeted special education-related services. And to date, we've brought in forty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars so far. These regular Circuit Breaker in FY twenty-five came in at one point nine million dollars. And there are no current extraordinary relief packages out right now.
And I just, sorry, I just wanted to add that Medicaid reimbursements is something new that we're actually accounting for to help subsidize our budget. The issue with this is with, you, I think those of us who've had experience with Medicaid understand the complexities of Medicaid, the system and the paperwork. And so in order for us to bill back, there's an extraordinary amount of paperwork that needs to happen. And so with the reduction in staff and, and also the reduction of, you know, teachers, the, the loads are becoming heavier. And so that time to do this reimbursement for Medicaid becomes, it's, it becomes a lower priority. So we're, we're seeing that right now. I mean, our, we were projecting as our FY twenty-five budget that we'd be pulling in at least two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Based on our current numbers, we're not going to be anywhere near that. So this is an issue that we have been, we're very aware of, we're watching this very carefully. We're thinking about ways that we can support our faculty and staff with regard to their reporting of Medicaid and, and billable hours. But it is time-intensive and it is, it is paperwork. And, you know, when we have to decide between paperwork and being in front of students, usually the paperwork gets put aside. So I just wanted to call that out.
And this year, the reimbursement rate, so the way Circuit Breaker works is you get seventy-five, you get seventy-five percent above and beyond a threshold. So for special education tuitions, we got seventy-five percent. And transportation ended up being forty-four percent this year. Now, from the tri-board meeting the other day, we were told with the SOA, they were saying that we would get a hundred percent transportation next year. I think that's hopefully optimistic. But we shall see, I, I guess, stay tuned. But if we were at the same seventy-five percent reimbursement rate as we are today, we would be at least bringing in two million dollars next year with our numbers. Unknown would be Medicaid and unknown would be if there were any other extraordinary relief funds for FY twenty-six.
This is the historical view of our Circuit Breaker. So just so everybody knows, Circuit Breaker is basically the way that the state helps local districts to pay for out-of-district expenses in particular. And what they do is, once you hit a threshold, and that threshold this year is fifty-two thousand, four hundred and nineteen. So everybody that is, has a tuition out of district, and I believe all of them are well over fifty-two thousand, four hundred and nineteen. The difference between that fifty-two thousand, four nineteen and the total is what the state says, okay, we're going to reimburse you seventy-five percent of that amount. And that's where that money comes back to. After all that's been claimed, as of a couple of years ago, this was put into the Student Opportunity Act for, for transportation. And so transportation this fiscal year was reimbursed at forty-four percent. So I just wanted to make sure folks understood how that actually works. So what we're looking at here for calculations, we have our tuitions for students that are attending other Massachusetts public schools that for special education, private tuition, collaborative tuition, this is the total. This line here is transportation in district, it's five hundred, eleven thousand dollars. Homeless transportation actually is much higher than that this year. It's actually about a hundred and thirty thousand. So students that are classified as homeless, meaning that they might be currently attending Stonem Public Schools, but have either come from another community or perhaps they were in Stonem and then went to another community. We have what are called, uh, community agreements and we tend to split the cost for homeless. So there's a very involved process called the best interest determination. If a student becomes homeless, that student's team comes together and decides where is the best place for them to remain, whether it's a new community or to stay within their own. And then the districts, you know, are responsible for the portion of cost for transportation. The in-district transportation and the homeless transportation, that's not reimbursable, that's not counted under reimbursement. But under Title One, we can sometimes claim homeless transportation if we write our grants that way. The transportation out of district is reimbursable. And so for this year, it was at one million, twenty-seven thousand. You take the forty-four percent reimbursement, which is about four hundred and fifty-two thousand. And you add up the rest of the transportation and you get a one point one. So we're looking at between the transportation and the tuition, the actual cost is just over six million. Then over here, what we do is we take that Circuit Breaker money and we say, okay, it's split between it's split between, what you do to claim Circuit Breaker is you have to do it at the end of every school year. And, uh, the Circuit Breaker can be used for only one fiscal year in advance. So we take that two million and we split it out between the two fiscal years. And as you, uh, heard Leah say before, we're anticipating about one point nine or about two million in Circuit Breaker. So we take that and then we take the entirety of our IDA, IDEA grant, which is a federal grant. That's two point seven. We subtract that from our grant total and this is what, uh, the district ends up responsible for. Which is at three point three oh five.
So that is what we budget for in the operating budget.
Yep.
And if you do notice, um, in the middle of the reimbursement column, it says twenty-five and twenty-four.
Yep, sorry.
Actually twenty-five and twenty-six.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Numbers jumbled.
It's okay.
Um, sorry, I'm doing a lot of history here because there's so many, there's so much interest in this topic. And when it comes to potentially an override moving forward, it's really important that folks understand the numbers and, and why we're here so that folks can feel confident in, um, the district's management of funds. So going back, uh, again, back to fiscal year twenty-three up to current, these are the municipal dollars, literally what was increased in the budget from what the town was able to afford. So la- uh, this, this year, uh, the town was able to afford one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand. That ended up being a three point two percent increase for FY twenty-five. The state aid increased by two hundred and fifty-five thousand. That was a three and a half increase. So that gives us our total budget number. We don't know what state aid is gonna look like yet until the governor's, uh, budget comes out. But you did, I think for folks that might've been listening the other night, when, um, Senator Lewis and, uh, Rep Day were here, uh, they were, um, talking about how these numbers come into play with regard to the overall, um, funding formula with, um, chapter seventy. So it just depends on what that's gonna look like, we'll plug those in. But we're anticipating from the, um, town, two point five percent increase, that's part of our assumption.
And every year, the week of, the last week of January is when the state budget is actually due from the governor. So that would be the first round, just do the first round of chapter seventy numbers.
These are historical costs that go back all the way to FY eighteen and it just broken down into categories of school general fund. Our chapter seventy aid, here's that big bump year when the Student Opportunity Act went into play and we're still benefiting, um, from that. The charter school tuitions have gone up again in fiscal year twenty-five from three point four million last year to three point eight million this year. Essex, North Shore, Aggie, we have, um, tuition for a hundred and forty-one, that's for a group of students that attend there. Minuteman Regional and then, um, Northeast Voke. So the, um, cost for sending students out, I'm sorry, not sending students out, but for students who choose to go out to, um, a Voke or a charter school, the town is responsible, um, according to formula, that we need to pay those tuitions. So, here's the budget proposal. We were at thirty-five, seven ninety-six, nine seventy-eight. We took a million dollar reduction. We had, uh, ARPA and state earmarks. And so we've got that carrying forward. And FY twenty-six, in order to sustain what we have, we need thirty-nine million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's an increase of ten point one percent over the current fiscal year budget. We know that the municipality is probably not going to be able to afford more than two point five percent increase, which is just under nine hundred thousand. This leaves that gap of two point seven three three, four seventy-three, not including, um, potential costs associated with redistricting and collective bargaining. Um, this is broken down by cost center, similar to what you just saw earlier. How are we gonna balance the budget? All of these are positions. We're looking at right now and we're only, we're up to about three point five right now. So we've got another million to go. So this budget is still not completely balanced. So this is three, about three million dollars of reductions and this is what it looks like. Twenty-three full-time classroom teachers. Three, uh, FTEs for specialized services. Um, that runs the gamut from, um, across special education. Uh, it could be ELL, it could be reading, we're still trying to figure out all of where this is gonna fall. Um, interventionist, uh, for a total of twenty-seven certified staff reductions for non, what we call non-certified, and this is how we report them. For our ESPs, we're looking at a reduction of nine. We're looking at three secretarial reductions currently for a total of twelve. And then for programmatic cuts, we're looking at reducing athletics by forty percent. That's gonna be detrimental, um, as well as all the other cuts. Supplies, we don't really have a lot left to cut from supplies, so that's a low number. Technology, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we're looking at delaying, um, renewal of Chromebooks. And we're looking at, we're on a full budget freeze right now, so we're trying to see if there's anything we can do with some of the state funding that we received to, um, to pre-purchase some, um, materials that we could use for technology. And then, uh, to break it down a, a little bit more, um, looking at pre-K to four, uh, we're looking at a total number of about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand to specialist positions. We're not quite sure exactly which roles, but specialists follow, um, you know, things that are, that are included within the specialist realm. Art, music, PE. Um, not all of those things necessarily, but, but that's the dollar amount that we need to get to. Um, for, um, for, uh, elementary. We're looking at reducing our kindergarten ESPs by fifty percent. Last year, um, we had, uh, proposed a hundred percent reduction. That obviously, um, was not very, uh, well supported, there's a lot of opposition to that understandably. Um, so this has a fifty percent reduction in there. Reduction to special ed ESPs and ABA techs for about ninety-five thousand, reduction of an interventionist, reduction of a special ed coordinator, an increase of pre-K tuition, so we're adding that in as a, uh, savings. An increase of pre-K tuition, um, sorry, with twelve additional seats. And then if we, um, increase pre-K tuition to ten thousand, which has happened, we're, I can now account for that, uh, as a savings. The, the goal was to get to a million dollars, so we're still eighty thousand short for pre-K. And overall, we're still, as I mentioned before, we're, we're about a million that we haven't cut yet. At the middle school, we're looking at significant elective and, um, elective reductions in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Electives are things that, um, students take now, mainly, um, what students know as exploratory classes. This is an area that, when we were talking about, none of, none of these are, are, are easy. But when we're talking about what we have to preserve in terms of the core, we're talking about how are we going to preserve English, social studies, math and science. That's where we're at. That's where we're at with this budget, is we're talking about basics. We're looking at world language reduction. We're looking at two core content area teacher reductions, and I just said we're trying to preserve core content. We're digging into core content. Reduction of two ESPs, reduction of special education, team leaders. This was just put into place to help our teachers, um, to have a way to organize and implement curriculum in a, um, with fidelity. And that's brand new and we have to get rid of it. Attrition, we're looking at potential savings with, um, retirement. Uh, instituting fees for extracurriculars, we're looking at, um, being that we want to be able to continue providing extracurriculars. And so what we're looking at is instituting a hundred dollar fee for any student that wants to participate in extracurriculars. Uh, we're moving the attendance officer, which is actually a, um, it's actually a district position, but it's been under the middle school budget. So we're moving that into the district line. So essentially, it's a savings for the middle school budget, but it's being added into the district budget. And then other specialized supports are, um, things, again, like I mentioned before, any kind of specialized. We're talking about potentially literacy, we're talking about math, we're talking about ELL. And the reason I'm not getting so specific is saying, we're gonna, we're gonna reduce, you know, two English teacher, and I'm, and I'm just using that as an example, is because we don't know yet how we're gonna make this work. So we are literally trying to figure out how we're gonna be able to run our schools with this budget, with this amount of reduction. And this is taking us some time to figure it out because we have to figure out class sizes and where students are gonna go and schedules and what is manageable to even run the school. That's where we're at. We still need to reduce another hundred and fourteen thousand from the middle school. At the high school, we're looking at electives across multiple domains, cuts in the realm of just under two hundred. The high school had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reductions last year. The middle school had five hundred thousand dollars of reductions last year. So now I'm asking them to cut a million on top of that. So we don't have a lot to work with here. World language, we're looking at. We're looking at reduction of three point four core content teachers, core, math, science, English, social studies. Reduction of our department chairs, uh, some savings hopefully realized through attrition. Clerical and support staff, supplies. And then as you saw before, um, in one of the opening summary slides was athletics. We're at just under a million, we still have another forty-six thousand to go there. Central office, we added, as I mentioned before, we added the attendance officer into that budget out of the middle school budget. We're restructuring administrative support, seventy-two thousand dollars. We're not sure what we're doing yet around Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. That's a question mark because we're trying to figure out, um, what that sta- what the staffing's gonna look like. We have a potential plan in place. We have talked about, um, Assistant Superintendent Castanwe's role. Restructuring that, we're not sure yet. Uh, reduction of the technology budget, as, as mentioned previously, and then a reduction of a B C B A, which technically falls under, um, districts, uh, in special education. So we're at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand for district cuts. That's on top of the district cuts that happened last year, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So in summary, we're at about three million, just over, almost three point one. And we have to keep going, um, to get to a balanced budget. So we are grueling, these meetings are grueling. That's the only way I can describe it. We're talking about decimating. We're decimating the system. I, I, there's no other way to, to, I can't sugarcoat it. And we have about another million to go. So what are we looking at? Um, some of the things on the table that had come up as a possibility, can we reduce pre-K in kindergarten, make them all half days? That was not looked upon favorably and, um, I think when we talk about where we need to invest our dollars, why, how, why would we do that? How could we possibly cut our preschool and our kindergarten in half? We're teaching kids to read, we're teaching kids to behave in class. And all we would do then is we would have less prepared students in first, second, third grade and we would create more problems down the road. So that was looked at and after a lot of discussion, uh, it came off the table. So we're looking at a redistricting option. If we consolidated a school, um, you know, to put it in perspective, Colonial Park operating budget is just under three and a half million dollars for an annual budget. That's about how much we have to cut. If we were to redistrict, what we're doing now is we're really digging into that to examine what that would look like, what a great configuration would look like, what the cost savings might look like, could we consolidate some of the services that we have? But then you have to add in busing. You have to move students from their neighborhood school. What would happen to kids in third grade? Would they go to a new school for fourth grade and then another school for middle school? This is, these are the choices that we're, that we're looking at, none of these are good options. We're also looking at, um, significantly increasing our class sizes because right now we have preserved, for, to the best of our ability, we have preserved class sizes at the elementary level. If we start cutting into those core classes to make reductions and get savings, we're talking about classes of twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And then we would still need to even those out because you would have discrepancies between buildings. So we would have to be moving kids anyway if we did something like that. So how would that play in, play into a potential redistricting option? So we don't know, these are questions that we're thinking about. I wish we didn't have to have these discussions, but we have to have a balanced budget and without a significant increase in the ability to meet the needs and the financial obligations of the district, this is, this is what we're doing. So our next steps, in January, we have our public hearing on the school budget. And then the twenty-third, the school committee needs to vote, followed by two public meetings that will have members of all three boards, um, available. And as I mentioned earlier, there are appendices that dig a little deeper into special education da- data as well as, um, as well as, let's see here, sorry, my brain's just a little bit frazzled, enrollment projections, forecasts, and then capital requests, all of those are deferred. Deferred, deferred, deferred. Line item by budget cost center. Um, for folks, again, that wanna take the time, everything is here, full transparency, all the numbers are here. All of our line items are here, all of our expenses are here. This is for folks to really dig into and for people that like numbers especially. Just to show you that, you know, everything's here. So, um, I hope that this will generate a lot of interest. I really do because our community really needs everybody to come together on this.